February 12, 2019. And we always begin with a pledge to the flag. So if everyone would be so kind as to stand and salute the flag. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so we have an agenda that was sent out, and there are copies at the back of the room. And we also have some additional information that Mr. Sartissio, our superintendent, wanted to include under Financial Treasuries Report, Roman numeral five, G, review and approve items for Capital Project 2017, one approved resolution to accept bids. And it's a bit more extensive than what was included in our agenda. And so if the board's okay, we would treat this as just an amendment to that proposed agenda. And we would include this as the resolution that we would use for bringing to the table 5G1. If everyone's okay with that, and we can discuss it once we move the proposed agenda. Then we also have consent items. We've got first, Roman numeral six, A1 through 5, which are retirements, including, we have Roger Pecos here tonight, I believe Roger's here, Amy Hans is here. I'm not sure, I don't see any other people who have handed in their retirements. And so one thought would be that we take them, and then, we then take and move Roman numeral eight, A1, and that's the Social Studies Interview Project Presentation. That would come out and actually be treated separately as well, relative to, I think it's the superintendent's report there. And we would take that, and then, that would take us to Roman numeral three here from the public. Now, with all of that, then additionally, I would just mention that we have a consent agenda, other than the personnel that I just proposed, that being six, A1 through 5, and then new business. And I would just remind everyone of this. Adoption of the consent agenda, upon motion and a second, and an affirmative vote by members present approves each and every item so designated. However, prior to the adoption of the consent agenda, any board member may remove any item from the consent agenda. And of course, one proposal is that we take six, A1 through 5. This item will then come up for discussion as part of the regular agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite routine matters so that the board gives more time to deal with substantive matters, such as retirements, and presentation that's going to be made tonight, and other presentations for the board. So with that, would anyone wish to pull something out of the consent, other than what's already been pulled out? No? So with those out there, I would need a motion to approve the agenda as presented in that fashion, and that's Ms. Gegenchats. And is there a second to that? Mr. Hawke? Any other discussion or consideration? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? That's adopted. Okay, so we have an agenda, and the first item that we have is Roman numeral six, A1 through 5. And so we would need to bring that to the floor. It's approved resignations. Could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Ms. Powell Fortner? And is there a second to that? Mr. Aldrich? Okay, so that's been moved and seconded to approve the resignations of the found people. Katrina McQuiggin, Kate McQuiggin as we know her, Kimberly Meckley, Tammy Ray, Roger Pecos, and Amy Hans. And Mr. Forster, do you have a proposed amendment?
I do. I would like for each one, for each person, just to say it is with regret that we are looking at the acceptance of the resignation. And also, I'd like to recognize how many years, if they don't mind, I don't want you to get seen older. (laughter) But I think it's important to recognize the years of service that they have at the district because of such an impact that they've had with our students.
Okay, so would you have the years, though?
Oh, apparently I do. I do have to be serious.
That's an amazing thing. It's almost magical.
It is magic. So do you want me to just go through them?
Sure, that'd be great, be part of our amendment.
Sure, absolutely. So Kate McQuiggin, Mrs. McQuiggin, she had 30 years of service to our district. Ms. Meckley, Kim Meckley, had 30 years as well, service to the district. Tammy Ray, 29 years, service to the district. Mrs. Hans, Amy Hans, 21 years, service to the district. And Mr. Pecos, Roger, 31 years. Thank you so much for all that.
I'm terrible at math, but I think that's 141 years.[424.21][424.21](laughter) So do we have a motion by Mr. Forster? Do we have a second for that? Mr. Jamburn?
Second.
Excellent. So they had amendments there, and do we need to vote to accept the amendment? We probably should, yeah. So could we have any discussion about the amendment? Hearing none, and all those in favor of that amendment, signify by saying aye. And opposed? It's, that's part of the motion, then, and then on the regular motion, any discussion at all regarding that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? Excellent. And Ms. Hans and Mr. Pecos, thanks so much, really appreciate all your work. It's just been wonderful. We actually wanted to move it to this point because we are lucky enough to have your social studies presentations this evening, and thought it would be really appropriate, you know, certainly for you, Ms. Hans. We're sorry, you know, the other teachers aren't here, but, you know, certainly understandable. And Mr. Pecos, thank you so much for everything you've done. It's just been wonderful having you as part of our district family, and I know you'll continue in that role, but differently.
Thank you.
So thanks so much, both of you. So with that, then, we have our Social Studies Interview Project Presentation.
Well, this is a project, and we brought some of our boards down, and I think all of you had a chance to see them before the meeting started. This is a project that has been going on for at least 25 years, the 21 years that I've been here and several years before that. And it's been really a rewarding project, not just for the students, but for us as well. The students have been able to practice interviewing, they've gotten to know some of their family members better. The feedback that we get from parents and community members is just outstanding. You know, parents who say, you know, "I knew my father was a veteran, but he never opened up to me. I heard so much when little Johnny interviewed him, and I had no idea that my father went through all of these different things." And if I can just share one story, and honestly, I wouldn't believe this if I hadn't been there myself, but we run an open house every year with our projects. And one year, one of the students brought in, the man that she interviewed, and they're looking over in the one corner at his board, and, oh, you know, "Great job." Another student came in with another veteran, same thing, looking over the board, and the two veterans caught each other's eye. They were on the same ship together and had no idea that they lived in the same community. Honestly, I get goosebumps just, you know, thinking about it. So it's really been very rewarding. The kids have learned a lot, they've been able to tie it to the curriculum because of the Vietnam veterans that they've interviewed, or missionaries, refugees, all kinds of different people who've come here or gone to do some kind of service for the country or visited other places. So we did bring a couple of students to share their projects with you, in addition to the ones that don't have any narration. So first, I'm going to introduce Trevor Napoli, and then Tess Carell, and then Joe Siri. They'll be presenting their boards to you and telling you a little bit about the person that they interviewed. Okay, Trevor?
Okay, so my interviewee was Amy Holdren, who is the investigative protective officer for Melania Trump. So this is my mom's cousin, who's in the back corner. And so she has been the investigative protective officer for the First Lady for a while. She also did the same thing for Mrs. Obama. And so basically, what she does is she drives the First Lady around. She does anything with the First Lady, goes to third world countries, goes anywhere that Mrs. Trump goes to. So it was interesting, she's always on the job, 12 to 15 hours a day, so it's a very important part of her life. And when I interviewed her, she was washing cars for Don Jr. So she, she is always busy. So specifically, I interviewed her about her last trip to Africa, and two places that she really had a lot of information retained about was about her trip to Ghana and Egypt. And this was in 2017 as part of Melania's B-Bass campaign. So basically, what they do is they have their team here, this is her and her team, and they travel on the B-5 military airplanes with their cars and everything that they need, all their food, all their water, cases and cases of bottled water. And they, first, they went to Ghana. So in Ghana, what they were trying to do was, you know, donate to hospitals and schools, supplies and things so that they could be fortunate like us here. And we have pictures, I don't know if you can see, but of the ports. And Ghana is, she said that it is a very interesting and good experience because for her, as it's her job, she doesn't have a choice whether or not to go there, but she sees how good it is to be in good old America, as she said it. So other things that she has to do is anything that Melania might want to do, they have to do first. So that brings us to Egypt, where they went into the pyramids in places that the public cannot visit, and they had to ride camels for a day, in case Melania wanted to ride a camel. And she didn't do either of those things, but...[851.62][851.62](laughter) So just stuff like that. And a big thing for me was about, it's so interesting that when we grow up in school, we don't think of jobs like that. We don't, you know, it's not something that we learn about a lot in school. So for me, this was really great to learn about someone in my family who I didn't really know a lot about what they did. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, thanks.
So I introduced my father, Doug Carell, on his adoption process to come adopt me in Hong Kong, China. So the process started October of 2001, and there was a lot of paperwork involved. August 2003 is when they got finalized and got mailed pictures and information about me, and, which is right here, if you can see that. Then, October 2003, they came over to Hong Kong, China to come adopt me. October 7th, which we call my gotcha day, is the day I got handed over to them, which is right here. And then they got two weeks to spend time with me, and time to bond and get close. And then all the families are down there. There were many families that came over with them. And October 23rd, they finally were able to come back home. And almost while they were exploring and bonding with me, the streets were filled with many people, and almost every person said that I was a lucky baby, that I was very lucky to be adopted by them, and that Hong Kong was very crowded compared to New York. And one thing I learned was how much effort and time was spent trying to adopt me, which is very, I'm very thankful for.
I present to my father, Joseph Siri Jr. My father enlisted in the United States Marine Corps on December 1st, 1989. His ship date to boot camp was March 13th, 1990. He enlisted in the GI Bill, which is the service to pay for your college once you would enlist. He, after 14 physical and mentally challenging weeks of boot camp, he earned the title of U.S. Marine. He graduated from boot camp, he got his ribbon from that. He earned his Meritorious Unit, Clement ribbon, during that during, after his final week of boot camp. Around this time, my dad and his fellow Marines started to hear scuttlebutt of issues in the Middle East. On August of 1990, Iraq made Kuwait, which was the beginning of Desert Storm Desert Shield Unit. In September, my father was assigned to Indian Company, Third Battalion, 25th Marines, a cold weather unit. Again, the scuttlebutt of the possibility of Indian Company 325 to be activated in Iraq was, I did it for Desert Storm Desert Shield. It was the senior Marines that denied the rumors of being false, but they were wrong. In January of 1991, they were activated. They were sent to Third Battalion to Norway for cold weather training. They were sent to Oslo, Norway, all the way to our circle in Tromsø, Norway. Some interesting things that are mentioned during experience overseas, with new food, caribou meat, the respect for the Marines, the respect for the Norwegian Army, likewise, the Norwegian Army respected the Marines a ton, and the cold weather survival skills that we learned during the time there. I never learned some of the stuff that my father did during the Marines until I did this project. It was some of the stuff that he showed me through pictures and through memories that I never got to understand fully about his time in the Marines. It's something that we don't know, we should ask our family more about their past in service and stuff. It's cool, interesting, and a ton of fun to learn this project, and I had a lot of fun doing this project. Thank you.
We had so many brilliant designs, it was, it's just, you know, these are three that we decided to share with you. We could be here all night with the talent that we have in our classes. I was recently contacted by a former student who is now a social studies teacher in the Avon School District, who was so impressed, remembered doing the project herself, that she is continuing, and she's doing it with her students. And I think tomorrow and Thursday, she's having their first showing. So I was really thrilled that it's continuing on with a former student because it's so valuable. Thank you for allowing us to come in and present and show you our, showcase our goods.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Thanks so much, Ms. Hans and Mr. Cuserta and Mr. Newell, and students really appreciate your presentations, and very interesting relative to questions I'm sure that some of us would probably have.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Some fascinating stuff, really.
Yeah, very neat. So thanks so much.
Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, that gives us the opportunity, then, to hear from the public. The board's reserved this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Concerns and comments during this session should be directly related to items listed on the approved agenda for this meeting. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return that to our district clerk, Ms. Slade. So is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? There is an opportunity at the conclusion of the meeting to address the board on any issue, if you care to. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? Let me see, no one, no, close that. Then we have minutes from our last meeting, and Ms. Slade, well, thanks for sending those out. We need to bring those to the floor for consideration. Ms. Paul Fortner, and is there a second to that? Mr. Hawke? And any additions, corrections, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? That's approved. Then we have our Financial Treasuries Report, and first, we have our Budget Status Report. And Mr. Forbes, anything you'd want to mention about that at all?
Just a couple of things. Typically, through the first six months of the budget year, we don't have a lot of the expenses normally coming in, that we typically would, the debt service or VOSEs. As a matter of fact, we didn't get our first large VOSEs bill until about two weeks ago. But I did want to just point out quickly on page 11, we did have scheduled in December interest payments on our current debt service, which is the 9711 codes, about two-thirds the way down the bottom, $47,000 towards the principal, and $166,000, which was a couple of different borrowings and interest.
Any questions about the Budget Status Report? I do appreciate that detail, thank you. Then the Revenue Status Report. Mr. Forbes, anything you'd mention there?
Again, this month, we're giving three different examples to try to give a little clearer picture of the revenue process, our revenue receipt process. On the two-page one, which is the form we've used before on the Revenue Status Report, under the current cycle, there are a couple of things I'd like to point out. Under interest in earnings, current cycle, we took in $13,000 during the month of December, about $11,700 of that was a rebate that we received on interest that we previously paid to the Dormitory Authority of New York State on our debt service. Basically, it's like a reduction in your mortgage rate, get some credit for your escrow. So that was a little bit unusual that we got that, $11,700. Under the basic formula aid, which is about two-thirds of the way down the page, we took in $974,000, which represented $550,000 of general aid, which was a scheduled payment, and also $425,000, which was our excess cost for high-cost special ed students, which was also a scheduled payment. The next line is $77,000, which is our supplemental lottery aid payment, and that is a scheduled payment, one of those per month, $77,000. At the bottom of the page, we have $29,000, which is the payment on our summer school, the summer school programs that we have. And finally, on page two, under the 4601 code, which is our Medicare reimbursement, we did get a payment of $24,000.
Thank you. Any questions about the Revenue Status Report? Okay, then, we need to approve the Treasuries Report for December. Could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Mr. Hawke, and is there a second to that?
Yes.
And Mr. Aldrich? Mr. Forbes, anything you'd want to mention regarding that at all?
Simply the Treasuries Report, as I think I mentioned last meeting, is the bankrupt conciliations for all of the district's accounts. We are beginning to see in a number of them creep up on the interest earnings, which is a positive for the district. It's been low for quite some time. All the accounts haven't followed suit yet, but they're beginning to show positive action.
Any questions or comments at all? Yeah, I actually heard a figure that there's like $3 trillion that was in commercial bank accounts earning .01 interest.
We've got a couple of low ones. They offset, they offset the earnings by the fees that you don't see, but they're still there.
Thank you. There's nothing else? All those in favor, then, signify by saying aye. And opposed? That's approved, then? And then we have the Cafeteria Revenue and Expenditure Report. Mr. Forbes, anything?
Yes, I thought it'd be a good time to give the board an update on the cafeteria. Because you only have a couple of months of revenue, and often you do buy supplies ahead, it'll always show a good flow as to how it'll end up for the year, but we already have a positive, slight positive cash position, and that includes taking care of the payment for the elementary certain lines that were replaced, so that's good. We also, as I mentioned, if you look under Ending Inventory, about two-thirds the way down the page, we have $27,000 inventory at the end of December, which is typically about double what we normally carry, so some of those factored into the calculation. Overall, the cafeteria seems to be doing very well, and I credit Ms. Bear and her staff for that.
That's great. Any questions about the cafeteria expenditure and revenue report? Okay, then, we have our Audit Committee Minutes from February 7. Could we bring those to the floor for consideration?
Yes.
And there'd be Mr. Aldrich, and is there a second to that?
What's up?
Ms. Gegenchats? Okay, Audit Committee Minutes. Mr. Forbes, thanks for putting those together. Mr. Hawke, Mr. Forster, Mr. Aldrich, anybody have any comments regarding the minutes at Certainly appreciate all the work that the committee did relative to, and Mr. Forbes and Mr. Sartissio, relative to the various accounts, reserve accounts, and obvious thoughtfulness that went into that. I know we're going to be dealing with that immediately after this, and certainly appreciate everyone's consideration with respect to that. I did note in the minutes that you want a discussion about a second capital reserve, possibly, $750,000. When would you want that discussion, and how are you all viewing that?
What happened is Mr. Sartissio said that he needed to get additional information together, and let us know when we wanted to approach some of the discussion.
So will it be addressed in the Audit Committee first, do you think? And then come back to the board? Is that how you're envisioning it, or not necessarily?
I think, first of all, so...
Okay.
And it's just a timing issue of having to be presented to the voters in a strategic plan, or do you want to roll that out?
So let me just ask this, relative to the minutes, is it your, at least initial thoughts as we await something more from Mr. Sartissio, that you would be recommending that we set aside $750,000 in the second capital reserve?
We would create that account, and it would be funded...
We would create that, that account, and it would be funded over several years.
Okay.
So then, what is it, funded over?
Six.
Six years and has to be used over time, correct?
Okay.
And then reviewing what our possibility is to size of the project.
Okay. Excellent. So then, um, okay, so we would just wait for Mr. Sartisio relative to the next step, then? Excellent. Okay. Anything else relative to audit committee minutes? Very good, and really appreciate it. Excellent. Nothing else, then? All those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed. Excellent. Those minutes are approved, then, and we've got the transfer of funds to reserve accounts. First one is transfer of funds to the tax surcerary reserve account, the amount of $50,000. Could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Ms. Paul Fortna, and is there a second to that? Mr. Aldridge? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed. That's approved, then. Again, thanks to the audit committee, Mr. Forbes, Mr. Sartisio, really appreciate that. Then, uh, the second one is a resolution to transfer funds to the retirement contribution reserve account, the amount of $125,000. Could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Mr. Aldridge, and is there a second to that? Ms. Paul Fortna? Excellent. Any questions or comments regarding that reserve and that addition? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed. That's approved. Then we have the resolution, and we've replaced it, as you know, with, um, Roman numeral V, G, 1, and 5, G, 1, what have you. And so could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Ms. Gagenchanson, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forster, and excellent. So, Mr. Sartisio?
Yes. Well, first off, thank you for indulging me and bringing to this adjustment in the way we are presenting bids. I thought it was important that our agenda be very specific in how we're awarding things, and as you'll, as you see on the addendum, it's broken down into base bid as well as alternates. And I thought that was important because our bids came in in such a fashion that we were actually able to take all of the alternates for the project, and they were significant. And, you know, things like additional site work, meaning the Ring Road and the north parking lot, and backstops for baseball and softball diamond, scoreboards for those areas. We had a number of new entryways that are a big base of our project, improving the safety of our, of our district. And, and the way our bids came in and the way the alternates are, were listed, it allows us to renovate the space that, that is being vacated. For example, in Ms. Piper's office, her office is gonna be across the hall, and now we're able to renovate that space into a usable conference space and really modernize that part of the facility. And the same goes for the other areas as well. Our middle school and our, and our high school will have true student service areas, which I'm really excited about, and much more beneficial for our students. And we were able to just get so much in this project, really because of the way our partners, primarily BCC, helped us arrange the bidding process, and so I'm very excited about that. So I, I thought it was important that we really lay it out very clearly, that we have a base bid and a number of alternates, and we've come in well within, well under budget for this project.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding that?
Only comment for me was just, I was very happy to see two local contractors get selected, so that, that's great for us, localities, love.
Any, anything else? Mr. Forbes, Mr. Sartisio, the facilities committee group, thanks so much. Really appreciate your work on that as well. I know it's very involving and it's very complicated. I don't actually know that. I just imagine it's gotta be ridiculous. So really appreciate, appreciate all that work. That's great. Okay, then, if there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed. That's approved. And that then takes us all the way to administrators reports, and we first, we've already done the social studies interview project presentation, so we've got Mr. Rada and his professional development plan updates. Mr. Rada?
I have a presentation for everybody.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Rada.
Well, again, thank you very much. At the start of this year, back on August 21st, I talked about how we created, how we initially created our professional development plan, and what we anticipated doing during our five in-service days this year. Now that we've completed four out of those five days, we thought it would be a good time to come back to the board and to show you how it all really kinda fit together. Again, this review from what we went over in August. The plan itself was made in collaboration with a number of different people. Started with a model schools team that went to Nashville, included all of our teachers with a cool, with a school climate survey, included our instructional leaders at Curriculum Council, it included the Board of Education goals. We really wanted to tie everything together. And then we, using all that information and having all those people get together, we identified three specific goals. The first goal dealt with high expectations for our students, for our, our classroom, for our teachers, for our administrators. Our second goal dealt with relationships. What can we do to improve those relationships, student, student, teacher, student, teacher to teacher, teacher to administrator, administrator to administrator, just relationships in general. And, uh, number three, looking at literacy skills. Again, every conference that we go to, every model school conference that we go to, every district that is there presenting, talks about what they've done to help with literacy skills. So that's something that we wanted to bring, to make a focus for us. So we go to our five in-service days.